Good evening, everybody. As a preliminary matter, this is Kevin Calcutt, Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Christopher Weider?
Present.
Cece Van Tijn?
Here.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Blake Robinson?
Here.
Judith Ozardi?
Here.
Carol Green?
Here.
Thank you very much. All right, so this open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the Agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment during designated points throughout the meeting. For this meeting, the Norfolk Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Posted Agenda identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And take care not to share your screen or your computer, as anything that you share may be broadcast and captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the Posted Agenda packet. Kind of messed up my flow there. A couple of business meeting ground rules. Before we get to the first item of the agenda, let me cover a few items first. Please ensure that you are on mute if you are not speaking. It is easy to pick up a lot of background noise. If you are speaking, please make sure you're speaking clearly, so we can get some accurate notes. After the board has the ability to review an agenda item, the Chair will open it up for public comments, at which time, if you would like to speak, we ask that you please use the Raise Hand feature of the virtual meeting. That is located by clicking on the Participant icon on the bottom toolbar, and then hitting the button for Raise Hand. Once you're called upon, we just ask that you please state your full name and your address before sharing your question or comment. Finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call vote. Let me just check our waiting room. All right, looks like we're good. Blake, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Sure. So, tonight after the call to order, we've got COVID-19 updates, followed by public comment. For action items, to consider changing the date and location of the annual town meeting from June 9th to June 24th. Please consider voting to restore funding to the FY21 budget if state and local revenue targets are met. Then, consider authorizing the Chair to authorize bids for surge, watered sewer chemicals, DBW supplies, and paper for FY21. An item added yesterday, to please consider changing the hours of the annual town election scheduled for June 23rd. And for discussion items, to discuss changes to restaurant alcohol licenses, to enable them to change their license premises in relation to the COVID coronavirus pandemic operating requirements. To please consider, to please discuss postponing the 150th anniversary parade to 2021. And then I've got some town administrator updates, followed by four warrants to be approved and one set of minutes to be approved.
Thank you very much, Blake. With all that being said, we'll move into our first item tonight, which is some COVID-19 updates. Blake?
Sure. So, over the last couple of weeks, our number of cases have remained steady at 22. We've had them go up and go down twice due to cases that need to be reclassified to different communities, but we've stayed pretty well at 22, which is good. And most of those people have recovered, so happy to hear that. As the governor has announced the phase in, the plan to phase in returning to a new normal, we are working on our reopening plans for all of our buildings. We've met several times, discussed the requirements for opening, and the ways in which we're going to make sure that staff is safe, public is safe, and that we can meet all of our obligations there. Looking to try to do that for the Town Hall approximately the week of June 1st. The library is planning to open, starting next week, for curbside pickup of materials and expanding your programming a little bit. And we're also working on plans for the COA and for more public to be able to visit the DPW offices for things that they might need. So, more details to come on that. But I just wanted to let you know that we are working on it and looking forward to inviting people back to town buildings in the future. I think it's also important--
Thanks, Blake.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I think it's also important to have everyone understand what we know right now about funding to cover the costs that we've had. There are two essential sources of funds to cover the expenses for cleaning and remote access and delivering school content and all those sorts of things. The first is that any funds are eligible under FEMA. We can apply for 75% of those eligible costs to be made up. We don't have a figure of exactly what's available to us in that program, but we're participating in the various training sessions to get up to speed on that. And we've been tracking our costs ever since the emergency started. With FEMA, they all will cover 75% of an eligible cost, and usually the community has to make up the other 25. That is the case here. But layered on top of that is the CARES Act passed by Congress in March. And the state has designated 500 million of the monies it's received so far for that, and Norfolk's share is just over $1,056,000. So, good news is that that 25% match we usually need to use for FEMA, we can use these CARES Act funds to make that up. And then we can also apply for items that were not eligible under FEMA or other costs that we have to be paid back by this source of funds. The requirement, the funding will be given out in two steps. There's an opportunity to apply for funding between now and June 5th. So, on June 2nd, on the Agenda, we will have an item to ask you to approve that grant application for us, because it has to be approved by the municipal CEO, which is the Board. And that will capture all the costs that we have to date, both on the town side and school costs. So, I spoke with Todd today, and we're estimating right now between $60,000 and $100,000 or so of costs on the town side. And we're also in contact with the schools to understand what their costs were, so we can add that into our request. That will significantly help end the year in a positive balance, because we've been-- the warmer winter has meant lower costs in the areas of utilities, and we haven't overspent the snow and ice budget, but we've been spending those monies on things like COVID-19. So, to be able to recoup all that will help us end the year in a better position. And then, since I don't anticipate we're going to use the majority of these funds in this first budget request, we will be in a good position to make a second application in after July, before the end of the calendar year, for any other costs we've had related to continuing to provide services during the pandemic. We've had some concern that the requirements that we'll need to have in place to safely open school will be at a cost, and I think we'll be in a position to be able to address those as well with these funds. So, all in all, despite a pandemic, good news in this front. And I just wanted to give you that slightly long update, just to give you a heads up that I say we will be back to you at the next meeting to ask for approval to submit the application. Thank you.
Thanks, Blake. One question for you. You know, with the release of the phased reopening plan from the governor yesterday, where are we going to centralize communications on when certain aspects of town government and services will be opening? Will that be posted to the website in the same manner it's been done before? Will there be some sort of calendar that we'll be able to maintain? What do you anticipate for the way that we communicate that out?
I anticipate the website. I think people have gotten used to going there every Monday and Thursday, looking for updates on case count. So, I anticipate this week involving in my update what's going to be happening at the library starting next week. I would expect the library will probably want to also post on its Facebook page, but I'm looking to, my aim is to be a kind of central location where people can know what's happening. We're still, as I said, working on the details of how we're going to open safely for the public at Town Hall, which is likely our, you know, after the library and COA at times our busiest building. And we're thinking about whether that would be by appointment and helping people figure out how to get those set up and everyone to know when those are available and what we're doing. We would use the website.
Perfect, thank you. Chris, any questions related to COVID?
No, thank you.
Cece, anything on COVID?
Yeah, just quickly. Blake, you were talking about the CARES money, a million and change that was coming to Norfolk. Is that guaranteed? Or is that what we can apply for, and there's a fly?
That's the total amount that is allocated to Norfolk based on population in this first round. The state has allocated half a billion of the money it's receiving for these costs to all the communities now. There might be more later from the state, there might be federal funds, but we don't have any details on that yet. So, I would say we can apply for up to $1,056,000 of our costs. If they were more than that, hopefully there'll be other funding available.
Well, I guess my question was, if we apply for up to a million and change for our costs, is it a guarantee that we get it? Or is it like when the small businesses were applying for the CARES money and loans, and it was sort of a first come, first served basis?
Since the state put out the exact number for every single community, I would say it's guaranteed.
Okay.
But we'll double check on that, just in case.
Thanks, Blake. All right, our next item this evening is our public comment period. During our public comment period, we invite anybody who is joining us on the call to take the mic, as it were, for three minutes to share any questions or comments they have as they pertain to the scope of the Select Board or town administrator. We do ask that these are done in a respectful and courteous manner, but we shouldn't have any problems with that. That being said, I would ask at this time, if anybody would like to share during public comment this evening, please use the Raise Hand function. You can find that by clicking the Participants icon on the bottom toolbar, and then the Raise Hand button. I do see our first volunteer this evening, Mr. Rosenberg. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is David Rosenberg. I live in North Street, and I just have one question. Before the start of this meeting, as we're just getting into Zoom, there seemed to be some discussion between Cece and I think probably Judith about accessing a packet of documents, it sounded like, from a shared Google Drive. And my question is, is there anything in the shared packet on the Google Drive, if that's where it was, that is at all different from the packet that's available to the public from the town's website?
David, from my perspective, go ahead.
It is the exact same packet, but it was teed up on my email. It is what I had been printing stuff off from, and all of a sudden, it froze and was telling me that I had a different Google address than I do. But it is just the call to meeting, now that I can't access it, the Agenda background, and then the data that is part of the packet that's available on the website. But I wanted, as I said to Judith in an email, I have all of the information I need, but I want to resolve this issue so that in the future, I'm not frozen out when I go to get the Zoom address without having to go hopping around on different websites.
So, thank you. I was just curious as to whether there was anything else there that the public couldn't--
No, I'm not hiding anything.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah, it's just the manner in which we distribute the same packet that we post on the website to the Board internally, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I'm going to lower your hand for you. Our next volunteer is Mr. Haddad. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Cece's question about the million six, Blake. So, the million six is, we are eligible to that, provided that we have supporting expenses. We're not getting a million six. I just want to clarify that.
That's correct. It's $1,056,000, I think, $900. So, yes, we have to demonstrate that we've had costs related to the COVID emergency up to that amount.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haddad. I'm going to lower your hand for you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak for public comment this evening? Anne Marie, did I see your hand go up or no? Let me just get you off mute. Go right ahead, Anne Marie. Anne Marie, I'm sorry, you're still on mute. We're not able to pick you up. Can you try unmuting yourself, please? Nope, there you go. Oh, Anne Marie, I'm sorry, we're still not able to pick you up. Am I the only one who can't hear her?
Can't hear either Kevin.
No. Shows that you're unmuted. Do you have a microphone that is not turned on of some kind? No, we still can't hear you, Anne Marie, I'm sorry.
It looks like Anne Marie did not-- you know, when you join and ask you, "Do you want to join with computer audio and computer video?", both of hers are grayed out, which usually means she didn't join the meeting with those options. So, you have to join with them, and then mute and stop your own video? It looks like she said no to that.
It's Jen here, too. When, sorry, I just, I'm on my iPhone, I couldn't figure out Zoom on the iPhone. If she's listening, if you exit out and rejoin, it may help. If she's on a Mac, then that's a whole other issue.
Anne Marie, if you'd like, if you don't want to leave and join, you can type your comments, your question in the chat box there, and I'll be happy to read it and address it there. So, with that, I'll move on to our next participant, that is the Henrys. Go right ahead.
So, Chris Henry, 30 Boardman. So, I just wanted to take a minute and follow up on the 1.6. So, understanding that that's a threshold that we would have to meet, is that a threshold we are likely to meet? Like, how much of that is a real number, I think, is what I'm trying to get to? As far as we can, as close as we can reasonably approximate?
So, let me try to enunciate a little better. It's $1,056,905. So, 1,056,905, not 1,006. Apologize if that wasn't clear.
Thank you.
It's, that's probably one of the hardest parts about all this, is understanding exactly what we might need to spend, and we don't know what all the requirements are going to be in future phases. Right now, on the town side, I think I mentioned earlier, our hard costs for buying materials and PPE and things like that have been about $60,000. We've got some salary costs to apply to that as well, so around $100,000 or so. Still need to account for the schools' costs, and I don't have a handle on that. So, you know, if there's no extra precautions to open school next year, I don't think we would reach that number. But I, without knowing what we have to be able to do, it's really hard to be able to tell you whether we would apply for the full amount or not.
Nope, totally understandable. I was just trying to get a feel for that. Thank you.
Wish I knew.
Thanks, Blake. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak for public comment this evening? Not seeing any hands. Anne Marie, if you're in process of typing something out, give me a thumbs up, and we'll hold on for you. Looks like we have another hand raised while we await. Anne Marie and Jen, go right ahead.
Hi. So, Jen Nguyen Hemlock Lane, I just want to say to the Board, I really commend you, because I understand how hard it is for virtual meetings, being a teacher myself, and the technical difficulties. And I can't even imagine monitoring more than, you know, 10 people at a time. So, just PSA, please, people have patience. It's hard to see when, you know, people have their hands raised, and I think that Cece and Chris and Kevin are doing their best to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. So, again, self-advocate, and you're doing a great job, the Board. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. We do have another hand raised. Donna, go right ahead.
Hello, Donna Jones, North Street. Is there anything you can share about Memorial Day events? I do know the Lions put up the field of flags. Some places, they had published a ceremony for Monday, but they have canceled that. I'm wondering if the veterans are sponsoring anything that the public should avoid or participate in.
Blake, did you want to do a quick rundown of what we're going to be coordinating?
Sure. So, Mr. McCarty is still coordinating that. He's coordinating less than 10 town officials to go to the ceremony, to the cemetery, and have a truncated ceremony with just those folks that will be taped by NCTV and shown. They're making every effort to air it the same day, so people can enjoy it on Memorial Day. But other than the field of flags, the other events that would go around with Town, with Memorial Day are canceled, of course, the parade as well, so.
Thanks, Blake. Donna, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have our much anticipated comment from Anne Marie. She states, "I noticed a very nice car in front of Town Hall, and eventually I saw it was a town car. I am wondering why that car was necessary and who has chosen them. Maybe there is savings we can take advantage of if we buy inexpensive serviceable cars going forward." Blake, could you talk a little bit about the process for selecting vehicles for town use?
Haven't actually bought any vehicles since I've been here. I'd be interested to know what car it is, because the ones that come to mind are a Ford Escape for the building commissioner drives, a small SUV that the Recreation Commission bought a couple of years ago for recreation. Most of the vehicles driven by our other staff, custodians and such, are retired police Crown Victorias. And the police and fire departments have larger SUVs. So, you know, I think we, in the future, whenever we're going to be buying vehicles, we're going to make sure that the vehicle is what's necessary to do the job, but not more than what's necessary to do the job. We have no plans to replace anything in the near future that I can recall off the top of my head.
Thank you, Blake.
The vehicle it is to answer that more clearly.
Very good. So, Anne Marie, if you have any more details or would like some more information on the specific vehicle that you had in mind, I'm sure Blake would be happy to assist you offline. Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to lower that hand. All right, one last call. Would anybody like to speak during public comment this evening? I am seeing no hands, so we'll be moving to our first action item this evening. "Please consider changing the date and location of the annual town meeting from June 9th to June 24th." Blake, would you mind bringing us up to speed on how we got here today?
So, it's great to see that we're now entering the phases of a plan to get to a new normal, and we're in Phase 1. And Phase 2 is hopefully around the corner in a couple of weeks. But, and even though the 10-person threshold does not apply to town meetings, it just doesn't feel like a safe time to have town meeting yet, even with all the social distancing protocols in place. And so, reached out to everybody who needs to be at town meetings to ask about other dates, and June 24th and June 30th came up as options that were possible. We're recommending June 24th, since, one, it's not exactly the last day of the year, so just in case we needed a second night, we had a second night to go to within the fiscal year if we couldn't finish on time. Or if we need to push it a little later, we still have another date that's possible within June. The other aspect of this that's come up is where is the best place to have the meeting that achieves the best social distancing? Because the middle school auditorium, according to KP, probably only hold about 75 people with those measures in place, whereas the high school auditorium and combination of gym and cafeteria can hold more. And I guess there's also the option of the field, which I have not been in myself, which probably is the best opportunity for social distancing, but has no air conditioning and less than ideal audiovisual capability. So, to keep things a little more complicated right now, until either state legislation passes and is signed by the governor, or we get a court order, we have to have town meeting within the confines of Norfolk, because our bylaws are such that that's required and that follows state law. So, right now, we're hoping that that legislation will be passed soon and will enable us to hold it in Rantham, if that's the Board's will. And we think that the June 24th date is the best guess we can make right now. And just to be, provide you with a little more information, if we are not able to hold the meeting this month because of the emergency, we would need to obtain state approval to go into a 1/12 spending plan per month. It's not hard, it just requires a vote of the Board and approval by the state. If we're not able to have the meeting next month, that would be our next step. But for now, we're just suggesting that we change the date. You vote to change the location to the high school, so we can accommodate more people safely. And we'll work on the details of getting that approval to have the meeting there as we go forward. So, and it's a lot to digest, but let me start with that and answer questions.
Thanks, Blake. A couple of things to add on to that. I do believe that both Plainville and Rantham are also utilizing the high school, and they are also doing it in the two previous nights, the 22nd and 23rd, leading up to our proposed date on the 24th. Is that right? Okay. And one of the benefits that I heard about that plan was the ability to consolidate sanitation and cleaning efforts to one area of one building to accommodate, as opposed to before and after if we were to have them in different areas. Is that also accurate? Yep. Okay. It is a note that our town moderator did chime in with his preference as the-- Yep. Okay. It is a note that our town moderator did chime in with his preference as the captain of that boat, as it were. Blithe, his preference was to have it at the fieldhouse, if I'm not mistaken, and not the auditorium like Rantham and Plainville. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in his email to me, he indicated that he felt it was, we were better able to spread chairs out and accommodate a larger group of people in that space. Yes.
Thank you. All right, this time I'll open it up to the board for questions and comments. This time we'll start with Cece.
So assuming that the legislation passes, and I can't imagine that it wouldn't, and we, like Rantham and Plainville, are headed to KP, is there a body count difference between what can fit in the, without social distancing, just generally, how many chairs can fit in the fieldhouse versus the amount of seating in the auditorium? Because I would think that what's appealing to me about the auditorium is the fact that it's less for folks to pick, to set up and to take down, if there's enough seating to be able to, you know, put seats between unrelated groups of people. Right? Because if I come with my spouse to town meeting, I can sit next to them. But if it's a stranger, there's going to need to be X number of seats between them versus the number of seats that you would be setting up in the fieldhouse. Do we have that information?
So my understanding is that the auditorium could safely hold 150 people with these requirements. I don't have an answer yet from KP about how many people they think the fieldhouse can accommodate. But I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that it's more, simply because that was what the moderator seemed to indicate, that he felt we could include more people there. Middle school, 75, auditorium, 150. You could also have people, I guess, in the cafeteria and the gym. That would add together, I guess, another 220 people. But in that case, they would be spread out between three rooms. So that would take some extra work to coordinate that.
So I know in the past, and it hasn't been in a long time, and it may have been, certainly predated when I was moderator, but I know it was at town meetings. I can't remember if it was when I was in Rantham or in Norfolk. There were overflows and it was in the KP middle. So apropos of nothing, but it was not that much more difficult to have the television. It wasn't particularly enjoyable, I'm sure, for the folks who were in the cafeteria during the overflow for town meeting. But it was certainly doable in terms of numbers. So then I guess if you could do that, then I, the other thing that I would want to know, and I understand we don't have that information for me to make this discrimination tonight. The other thing that I would want to know is, what is the expense differential, if any, between Norfolk hitching their wagon to the Plainville/Rantham, have it in the auditorium versus Norfolk being the outlier and having it in the gymnasium, basically, in the fieldhouse? Is there, is it, does it cost the taxpayers more money for buildup and take down if we go to the fieldhouse?
We'll check on that.
That was it for my questions. If it doesn't cost any more money, and if it's what the moderator wants, it seems to me that, that that's the way it goes. But I certainly want to have more information.
Good. Chris?
Kevin, I don't have any additional questions to what Cece asked. Thank you.
Thank you. So that being said, if we're going to do some more digging, would it make sense to preemptively take action on this item and then adjust later if needed? Or is there a downside for us waiting until June 2nd to act on this item?
Well, the way we scripted the motion, it just said to the high school, we didn't define exactly which room. So I'd suggest that we approve it, consider approving it as it is. And then we can clarify the room, get the details that you're asking about before the next meeting. I think giving people as much heads up that it's going to happen in a different place is helpful. Worst case is if for some reason we, the legislation didn't pass and we, for some reason, couldn't get a court order, though, you know, town council's aware we may need to do that, we'll just have to go back to Plan A.
Very good. That was my biggest concern, is what we do.
I'm sorry. The goal is to sign the warrant at the next meeting. So we have time for advisory to finish their work, to get it published and mailed. So in a sea of lots of uncertainty, I'd like to make a decision on this, but I understand if you want to wait.
Well, I mean, personally, I think we're covered by the generic KP Regional High School. And then we have the flexibility, should legislation not go through, to pivot back to the middle school. So I think that covers us in all aspects, unless anybody on the board has an objection to that. I'm seeing shaking heads, no. All right, with that, I will open it up for any public questions or comments. Please utilize the raise hand feature. Susan, go right ahead.
Hi, Susan Klein, 11 Kinney Pond. This is just a question that was raised to me today. And I honestly didn't have a sufficient answer for the person. So it's not really my question. But is there a reason why we can't or haven't considered having it outside? Yes, I understand whether. What I mean by that is if we're thinking of moving into the high school, is there a chance we could have it on the football field? Chances of contamination go significantly down when you're outside. People can spread out more. There's a PA system already on the football field. And I'm quite sure if anyone needs to do a screen presentation, it's not that hard to get a outdoor screen. I have one that the town could use. So just a question, if that's a possibility to consider. I, I know that we don't want to go to a 112 budget. And I also know that we don't want to take the chance of having and scheduling town meeting and it gets canceled because we backslide. So if we were outside, our numbers are, we're able to still have a town meeting even if governor's orders change, is my point, I guess. I didn't have a reason for the person who asked me on why we couldn't do it outside. So my question is to you, is it a possibility to have it outside? And if so, how can we consider that? Thank you.
Blithe, go right ahead.
I suppose it's eminently possible to have it outside. I think the things that come to mind are, do we need to rent chairs? Do we have enough to set up for a meeting? What would the costs and the logistics be to try to get the things that would be required to successfully have the meeting? And whether or not we'd want to consider a tent or take a chance with the weather? Those are the, my immediate thoughts about that.
I was meaning the football field, which has the bleachers. So I was assuming that we'd be able, I would assume that the KP bleachers can hold three to 300 or so people, which would allow for social distancing to spread out. We usually don't have more than, you know, 150 people at town meeting. So people would be able to spread out. Not to mention, people could stand almost anywhere along the fence. And if you've ever been to a game, you'll know what I'm saying. I'm sorry, I'm probably not explaining that very well. So we wouldn't need any chairs or setup for that. You would only need to set up a table for advisory, a table for the select board, and if anyone needs to do a presentation, a screen, because they already have a PA system. So it wouldn't be an issue with microfunding it. And of course, if it rains, we could still move to the fieldhouse or to the auditorium. That would just be my suggestion. I don't know if it's possible to even consider it. I just thought you guys might want to discuss it and let us know. It's still the same location. So your vote tonight would be the same. You just could change it if you wanted to, if it became more of a viable option to host it outside.
Susan, I know from my perspective, I've said it in a couple of conversations with other municipalities who have discussed holding their town meeting at a drive-in movie theater with everybody in their cars. And for votes, they would stick their hands out of their cars and have ushers count them. So I know that there are different ideas being thrown around of being able to execute this in an outdoor fashion. And I even believe that there was a discussion at one point with one of our neighboring towns doing it on the football field there at KP. But obviously, did not decide to go that way. So we'll definitely keep that door open. We'll do some exploration and obviously keep our ear to the ground as to how the restrictions are being adjusted once we get close to that date. But like you had mentioned, our vote tonight will solidify the location in general, and we can always pivot from there. All right, the next hand I see up is Donna Jones. Go right ahead, Donna. Donna, you're still on mute?
Hi. I have attended many King Philip High School music events. Just to give you the layout, if you park your car, you walk into a lobby, you go forward, you're a spectator at the auditorium. You're looking at a stage. Behind the stage is a cafeteria. The cafeteria has round tables and chairs. You go down the hallway to the left quite a bit, and you're at the fieldhouse, which is a rubber floor, extremely high ceiling. There's a fabric curtain that can divide the rectangle in half. When there's music pops concerts, people have to get the chairs and the tables out of the cafeteria and get them down to the fieldhouse. So we'd have to do that with a few tables and all the chairs for attendees of the meeting. The music sounds great when the conductor, the director is at a microphone. Sometimes it's hard to hear. So I'd ask you to please do a sound check at the fieldhouse before you decide to go there. Technically, it is capable to be in one room and run cables to get output from the cameras, get the audio into one of these other rooms. The high school, it's been done. I believe Freeman Kennedy set that up. They had hoped that their assemblies would be in the cafeteria, and they realized it's too small. Let's hold it in the gym. And they set it up for overflow, for the audiovisual. If you go for the football field, it could rain, the mosquitoes come out. And then there's, there's no tables in the fieldhouse. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And to Donna's point too, Blithe, we did have another question related to the potential for remote participation for this year's town meeting. I know that we had brought that up at some point during the pre-planning, but currently, where did we land on the potential for remote participation?
I'm going to have to check into that. I don't know if state law changes have enabled that. How we handle that, that's something I have to check on for you.
Thank you so much. I'll give it one more pass for anybody that'd like to add a question or comment related to the current agenda item for changing the date and location of annual town meeting. I'm seeing none. So with that, I would move that the board approved the change to the date and location of the 2020 annual town meeting from June 9th to June 24th, and the location from KP Middle School to KP Regional High School. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Do I hear further discussion? Hearing none. Rule called votes. All those in favor say aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weider, aye.
Cece Vantine, aye.
Unanimous votes. Thank you very much. Our next item this evening is to please consider voting to restore funding to the FY21 budget if state and local revenue targets are met. Blithe, a little bit of background, please?
Sure. At the last, at the end of the last meeting, there was questions raised from the public about whether or not the board would be willing to agree to support restoring budget cuts if state aid and local receipt targets were met above what we're projecting right now. And so this item's on the agendas. The board can consider taking a vote on that. I did also want to include for you some details of where we are on the budget at this point. We have apportioned out the $983,000 in reductions, and that's in your packet. The MECC assessment would make up just over $380,000 of it. We would count a portion, we would keep a portion of that in the budget for July 1, just to ensure we can make our first payment if we have to, and take the rest out in the fall. And the difference would be broken up between Nor, town of Norfolk, just under 205,000, Norfolk Schools, just under 285,000, and KP Schools, a reduction of almost 113,000. And we have coordinated with our sister communities that they would make corresponding reductions in the KP budget so that the overall increase KP, instead of being a budget increase.
Come for dinner.
49%. It would be an increase of 2.5%. And the superintendent is on board with that plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Blithe. And just to clarify, this is not a discussion on the budget reduction. That has already been voted, and as Blithe had said, is well underway. This is merely to formalize the board's intention to restore whatever we can based on what actualized figures come through in terms of state aid. So with that, I'll open it up to the board for any additional comments or questions, starting with Chris.
Thanks, Kevin. Blithe, do we have a, do you have a mechan-
I'm sorry, I didn't get all the-
... Norfolk schools, you know, would it, if Chapter 70 money wasn't restored, would that not allow us to put money back into the schools? How would we distribute that? Do you have a mechanism in place on how you plan on doing that? And will it require the board's vote?
Well, the, the, the mechanics of it would be that if, say, we got information from the state in early September that money would be restored, we would, the board would actually vote to and change line items at a fall special town meeting. We haven't discussed in detail exactly what would go back to whom. You know, if it's Chapter 70 money, yes, you could argue it goes into schools. But then if you say that, then what do you do if excise taxes come in better, which was a local aid cut, you know, how does that get distributed? I think that's going to bear more discussion. The one thing I would say is that once we vote the KP budget, that is settled. We have had conversations between KP and our sister towns about if they saw a much deeper cut in Chapter 70, would there be any opportunity to come back to communities? And that is possible. The school, KP School Committee would need to certify a new budget. And then the towns would have 45 days to act on that. If we did nothing, it would become required. If we took action on it and say, didn't pass it, it wouldn't. So I'm sorry for the long answer, but I'd say overall, we haven't sat down to discuss exactly how monies would be apportioned back to answer your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, I will say from my perspective, I think everybody understands that any funding allocations would need to be passed through fall town meeting. So the board would be putting together the agenda items and proposals for said fall town meeting. And at that point, I would imagine is when we would have that discussion as to what the actual figures were for each line item and how they would be re proportioned back to the areas that were originally cut. So that was, that was how I envisioned that process working.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you. Cece?
I'm sort of, I'm with Chris that I would just want to make sure, and it seems like that's essentially what- that's essentially what we're doing is, is we're essentially saying, listen, we suspect we're going to take the hit that we think we're going to take, and so we're entering this particular budget. In the event that it's not as bad, we're going to revisit and allocate as we had originally intended the budget to look like. And the devil being in the details, it's okay to acknowledge that that would happen in the fall at Fall Town Meeting or in the days leading up to Fall Town Meeting in terms of deciding what mechanism, to Chris's point, the money would go back. I am totally comfortable voting to say, yes, absolutely. We viewed these cuts only as a reaction to the pandemic and the economic impact that resulted therefrom and not from anything else. And so I'm comfortable with assuring people that in the event that things are not as bad as we think, then those monies would go back where we had originally planned for them to go. If that's, if we're capable of doing that per the mechanism suggestion.
Right. Very good. Thank you, C.C. At this time, I would open it up for any public questions or comments related to the vote to restore funding from our cuts if local and state revenue targets are met. At this time, I would ask anybody who would like to speak to please use the raise hand function found by clicking the participant icon on the bottom toolbar. Our first hand is from Dr. Lardy, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I just wanted to add to the discussion. Basically, we have been asked, as Blythe mentioned earlier, in order to balance the budget, to look at a $285,000 reduction from the Norfolk Public Schools. When we gave our budget presentation back in March, I think it was very clear to the public that that's a really difficult reduction for us to make, and there really isn't a way for us to close that gap without looking at some staffing and some positions. Definitely understand that the town is in a significant budget shortfall and respects that the board's decision is to take a conservative approach. But we're also being asked to, as Blythe mentioned, at a prior meeting, work with associations to look at salary reductions and to try to find ways to offset that without dramatically impacting programs. I think everybody is willing to work collaboratively, given the emergency situation, to do the best that we can to meet that target, and are just asking if the revenue is not as dramatic as we're anticipating as far as the shortfall, that through the special town meeting, funding be restored to budgets as allows, as close as possible to our initial request so that we can bring those programs and positions back. So that is, that is really what we're looking for, that we understand that these reductions may need to be made because of the pandemic and the economic crisis that we're in. But if that improves, these cuts are very painful for the schools. There, we don't have a lot of ways to do that, and we're working really hard to make those reductions. And if it's not necessary, because the revenue picture improves, we want to be able to bring those programs and restore that budget as needed in the fall. And my understanding is that the board could do that, and the town can do that through the special town meeting in the fall.
Thank you very much, Ingrid. Next up, we have Mr. Haddad, go right ahead, sir.
Just, just to clarify, town meeting has not approved a budget, and certainly not approved a full, the full budget that originally was presented. What we will probably be approving is something reduced based on the revenue projections that we've discussed over the last few weeks. So if it does come up at Fall Meeting, is it that each line item would come up for approval? How would that take place, Blythe? I guess since, since we, like I said, we haven't approved a original budget. So if we get revenues, we just can't restore a budget that's never been approved.
So the plan is to have the annual town meeting on June 24th and to approve a budget for the fiscal year on that date. And then if that takes place, when we get to a meeting in the fall, the board could have an article or articles on the warrant to make adjustments in those line items. So if a line item had $100,000 in it and we wanted to add, you know, $10,000 to it, that could happen by citing the revenue source that it would come from and make the adjustments that way.
Okay, I think that's, I mean, so we'd be, in effect, we'd be approving line items and restoring line items as opposed to reapproving a new budget. We'd be reapproving line items based on available new revenues.
Correct. I mean, if, you know, if it's for the school, it would be a dollar amount to the school budget because one, voted for the school, it's under their, you know, care and custody. If it's for the town, it might be apportioned by, you know, the departments we remove the money from now.
Right, you gotta understand, thank you, yep.
Thanks, Ed. Do we have anyone else for a comment or question related to restoration of funding for the FY21 budget in the fall? I am seeing none. So with that, I move that the board vote to reinstate budget reductions should state aid and local revenue targets be met for the FY21 budget. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes, all those in favor say aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Wieder, aye.
C.C. Vantine, aye.
And the vote is unanimous, thank you very much. Our next item this evening is to please consider authorizing the chair to award bids for served water and sewer chemicals, DPW supplies and paper to various bidders for fiscal year 2021. Blythe, anything you'd like to add?
Pretty straightforward, these are the annual bits that Serge does on our behalf. We take part in them because it saves us time and dollars by a cooperative bid with 23 other communities, and so we recommend the approval. It doesn't require us to buy these items, it just enables us to buy these items as we need them.
Thank you, Blythe. I'll turn it over to the board for any comments or questions, starting with C.C.
No.
Hard no from C.C., Chris?
Christopher Blythe, have we, have you talked to the DPW to make sure these numbers are consistent with what's in their FY21 budget submittals? Obviously, we planned on buying asphalt in FY21, so are these numbers consistent, higher or lower?
Depends, in some cases, it's just an estimate. You know, we might need, we might need three-quarter inch stone and we might not. So we, we have to give the bidder some idea of what we might buy based on historical dollar amounts. The only area where I think it's specific is the bids for actual paving where we've measured out the roads we're going to do, and we've given them details on that. But I can't tell you how much paper we might buy or how many, you know, yards of a particular material we might need throughout the year.
No, my question was based on what we planned on paving in FY21. I think that's one of the biggest expenses we have. Have the, have you talked with the DPW, are these numbers consistent?
Yes.
Given their budget for that-
On paving, yes.
Okay, great.
Further questions or comments, Chris?
No.
Very good. With that, I would move that the board authorize the chair to award bids for served water and sewer chemicals, DPW supplies and paper to various bidders for fiscal year 2021. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion?
Just one point.
Hearing none.
I just would, I wanted, one other thing that came to mind after we finished that discussion, we haven't gotten approval for the Chapter 90 funds this year yet. That's still pending in Boston. So any monies we're going to spend so far this year, only monies we either had left from last year or were locally approved, the extra $100,000 that we approved last fall. So just to qualify my answer, Chris, if we don't see those Chapter 90 funds, we won't be spending all of this.
Kevin, the only-
Thank you, Blythe. Go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
The only comment was you didn't ask for any public discussion of this or any, any questions from the public, just to be consistent with your other items, but just, just to let you know.
Yeah, it's a good point. Typically, for authorizations for someone to award, I haven't opened up for public comment, but in the spirit of consistency, I'll be happy to open it up for anybody who would like to share a question or comment related to authorizing the chair to award bids at this time, if you use the raise hand function. I am seeing none, so I will fall back to our seconded motion that is on the floor. Any further discussion?
Not for me, I don't know if Chris has anything that he's-
Nope, nothing further.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Wieder, aye.
C.C. Vantine, aye.
And the vote is unanimous, thank you. Our last action item today is to please consider changing the hours of the annual town election scheduled for June 23rd, 2020. Blythe, a little bit of background, please.
So I received a request from the town clerk from Carol on Friday after we posted the agenda, asking that, realizing that the timing was such that we needed to add this item tonight in order for the board to consider changing the time, the hours of the annual election. Typically, it follows state law from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. But with the pandemic and trying to handle the election as safely as possible, we've implemented other measures. As you know, the ability to obtain a ballot mail is already happening, people are already voting. And so Carol is here tonight to discuss with you some options that she's come up with and a recommendation to shorten the date and what her plans are for the day. So with that, I would suggest we toss it over to Carol.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you to the select board for indulging me on such short notice. My calendar kind of got away from me with all the changes and everything that we've been having happening surrounding elections and everything. The select board is, part of the bill that was approved by the governor was to allow the select board that they can also change the hours of the town meeting. So we added the early voting by, you guys added the early voting by mail. And then my request would be that you also reduce the hours for voting. Typically, you know, currently by law, it's, the polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. I think a 13-hour day is a very long day to expose people to, you know, residents that may be coming in. For a little comparison, Rentham and Plainville have both shortened theirs up. Rentham is doing nine to two, and Plainville is doing 12 to five. I think five hours is a little tight because if you do have, you know, somewhat of a turnout, I'd rather space them out a little bit further than that. My recommendation is that we do 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. I think that gives us seven hours, you know, to space residents out to, you know, to commit and vote, and we're really pushing the early voting by mail. Monday, I sent out a little bit under 200 early voting ballots already. And I know Anthony had a, had a stack going today, and that was even before the mail showed up. So we're having a really good response with that. We're going to keep pushing that just for everybody's safety. I mean, we don't know where we're going to be at the end of June. So I'd like to, you know, ask you guys to consider, you know, changing it from, to 10 to 5.
Thank you very much, Carol. I know from my perspective, I think this makes sense. I will throw my own sponsorship out there for anybody who can or is able to please utilize our early mail-in voting. It just is a better situation for anybody involved. And as I understand, that on the state and national level, that is a political landmine that I'm not willing to jump on right now, but at the local level, you're only helping your neighbors. So I would throw my support behind anybody who has the ability to leverage that service. At this time, I'll expand it to the rest of the board for any questions or comments, starting with Chris.
Nope, I don't have any at this time, thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Chris.
C.C.
I think I approve of it for whatever that's worth. I think ordinarily, you know, it's funny, I was, I heard about it and I was thinking about it, I was like, oh, but the people who need to get to work early, and then I'm like, oh, people really aren't getting to work early. And then I thought about, what about the people who are coming home from work late? And I'm like, wow, people really aren't coming home from work late, who couldn't get to work early. And then you're right, with the, with the mail-in ballots, if somebody is one of these folks who can't make it to the polls during the newly suggested, newly posted hours, they're certainly going to know now, or soon enough, that their schedule would prevent them from doing it, and they can do the mail-in ballot. And as, obviously as well, people who aren't comfortable with the idea of going out and voting and being in public and, you know, the kind of people who aren't going to Lowe's or Walmart or Target, the kinds of people who are shopping and having stuff delivered and are more comfortable having things brought to home, this is a great opportunity for them as well, the mail-in ballot. So I think that it's, I think it's fine in this situation, considering that there, you won't be, it is unlikely that what this, my ordinary concern would be that there would be people that this would prevent from exercising their right to vote. And I don't, I don't think in this situation, people would be unaware of whether or not their schedule would be preventing them from voting in person. They would be aware of it, I would think, and would then be able to utilize the mail-in ballot. So I support it.
Thank you, C.C.
Thanks very much, C.C. Before we move on, Carol, was there anything that you wanted to toss out there as a PSA related to those who are looking to submit or leverage the mail-in voting option?
Just to, you know, ask, you know, ask people to utilize that option. I think it's a good option, you have a month, you know, there's still almost a month left that, you know, people can do it. We're trying to promote it on Facebook, on the town website. If we do, if you guys do agree to change the hours, there'll be a reverse phone call that goes out. That was actually the suggestion of the Secretary of State's office for notifying people for an hours change, and we'll definitely tag on to that to just remind people of the option for early voting. That's about all I got.
That's perfect, thank you, Carol. All right, with that, I will open it up to any of our attendees this evening in the audience, virtual audience. If you would like to ask a question or provide a comment as it relates to amending the hours of our annual town election, please use the raise hand function found by hitting the participant icon on the bottom toolbar. I am seeing no hands at this time. And with that, I will move that the board amend the hours of the annual town election on June 23rd, 2020 to 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes, Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Wieder, aye.
C.C. Vantine, aye.
The motion passes unanimously, thank you very much, and thank you again, Carol.
Thank you guys very much, I really appreciate it.
And that will bring us to our first discussion item for the evening. Please discuss postponing the 150th anniversary parade to 2020. Blythe, any perspective that you'd like to share?
Two things, one, postponing it to 2021, just to be specific. I know Mr. Terrio is here to talk with you about that. And then we can go back to the alcohol licensing after this item.
Hi, Life. Thanks, Kevin. So we, I called a meeting for last night. We had a couple of attendees come to a conference call. We didn't have all of the members. But I think it would be remiss to think that we could pull off the parade this year just in due to the fact that the social, just social distancing issues. And so it would be my recommendation and I'm suspecting that others would support as well, that we put this off until such time next year. Possibility of combining with community day next June. I haven't passed that through the Lions Club yet. Possibility of also including fireworks display along the same weekend. And that, that's really it in a nutshell. You know, the only other thing would be the donations that we've received would be to offer to send those donations back to anybody that contributed on behalf of the parade. And then move forward into next year, call it the 151. Parade.
Sponsored by Bacardi. Very nice.
Right.
Well, as, you know, as disappointing as it is, it seems like there's been a lot of that lately. But it does make for a lot of anticipation for next year's community day weekend, potentially with all these fantastic events surrounding it. I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments, starting with C.C.
No questions, no comment.
Thank you. Chris?
No, Paul, thanks for your efforts. Hopefully we can, we can make it happen next year.
Yeah, thank you very much, Paul, and thank you to everybody who's been serving on the, the committee to help organize and plan everything. We really do appreciate it. At this time, I'll open it up for anybody who has a question or comment related to postponing the parade. If you'd like to throw in a question or comment, please use the raise hand function now. I am seeing none. So we will be moving on to our next agenda item. Thanks very much again, Paul.
All right, thank you.
Our next agenda item is to please discuss changes to restaurant alcohol licenses to enable them to change their license premises in response to coronavirus pandemic operating requirements.
Yes. Just wanted to bring to the board's attention that we had a, we're contacted by one of our restaurants who was inquiring about the ability to change the licensed premise. And that's the area where they can sell alcohol. As you know, part of the board's job is to approve alcohol licenses and to specifically approve that, that area. With the pandemic and, and restaurants needing to spread out tables and, and looking for alternatives to be able to have as many tables as the state, state rules will allow, they want to know what our, our process would be. And so we don't have any answers for you tonight, but what we simply want to do is tell you that it's something that we're working on. We're waiting for advice to come from the state. In a conference call today, Lieutenant Governor indicated that they have formed a subgroup of the task force that's working on restaurant rules. And once, and part of that is trying to determine whether or not they can simply allow boards of selectmen to make changes or is there some way they can facilitate the process so that when the metrics are such that they want restaurants to be able to open, restaurants can legally sell alcohol, you know, in maybe different space than they sell it today. I.e. a restaurant wanted to have tables on the sidewalk where they don't now or in part of their parking lot. We want to support our businesses being able to be open and be, you know, successful. But there's a little step we may have to go through to help them do that. And we, and we want you to know we're working on it.
Thank you very much, Life. I know from my perspective, you know, I worked very closely with restaurants in my professional life. It is a very hard time for restaurants, they scramble to try to figure out how to make these end meats, while still with the uncertainty surrounding how they're going to be opening and when they're going to be opening. So I'm in full support of being able to do whatever we can to support them in that effort. So if there is something that we're able to do within the legal parameters, I would absolutely like to explore and do whatever we can to help them. I'll open it up to the rest of the board for questions or comments, starting with Chris.
Yeah, I think I'll echo what you said, Kevin. I think anything we can do to help the restaurants at this time is warranted. They, they've suffered pretty hard these last couple of months and probably will for the next couple. So anything you can do is, is well warranted this time.
Thank you, Chris. C.C.
I don't have anything to add. I think it's all been said. I, I agree completely.
Very good. Thank you, C.C. At this time, I'll open it up to anybody who is attending this evening who has any questions or comments they'd like to add related to potential changes in alcohol licenses for restaurants in response to the coronavirus pandemic. If you'd like to share a comment or question, please use the raise hand function. I am seeing no hands. So we will be moving on to our next agenda item. Next up is our town administrator update. Life, go right ahead.
I want to try this out as a, as a way to communicate information I think the board might be interested in and maybe residents would be interested in. My plan is just to cover a few things that I would be alerting you to as we, as we work and take your questions if you have them. But mostly it's just meant to be helping you understand things that are going on in various departments. And so in no particular order, Lake Street completion is, is finally out of the gate and started. The grading of Lake Street happened today. And the initial paving of the road will take place on Friday and next Tuesday, followed by drainage work, followed in the fall, probably by the final paving and so on. So great to see that finally getting going. In the last two days, both Todd Lindmark and I and Anne Marie Duggan have had calls with both Moody's Investor Service and S&amp;P, Standard and Poor's for a bond issue that we are holding on June 1st, and which will be an item on your June 2nd agenda to approve the sale of those. We are accomplishing two things. One is to sell bonds for the final cost of the Olive Day roof, the roll-off truck and Lake Street, as well as a refunding of a 2012 issue of bonds for which we believe the interest rate will save the town. Our tax pay is about 6% over the life of the bond. So good news that the market is such that we can accomplish that at, at less cost. Overall, the issue is just under $4 million. So we'll have all those details for you that night. Overall, I think the calls went well with both of the rating agencies. And we're expecting to maintain our rating as we go forward. The MECC work to get the two new towns added is also moving along well. And we expect to sign the revised intermunicipal agreement between the, actually six towns meeting on June 3rd. So getting that well in hand for starting July 1st. The transfer station, we are, been implementing the new cost structure. People are buying decals at the higher rate at this point. And we are finishing off the details with the trash bag company so that those will be available approximately July 1st. And there will be a fair amount of, you know, public information going out about how to switch your stickers for bags, how to get bags and all that sort of thing. So hopefully that's seamless for our, for our users. You've probably noticed from the website that there is a municipal vulnerability grant, public listening session. That's Thursday night at 7 o'clock. It's another Zoom meeting. It's part of the grant we got earlier this year to study vulnerabilities in our municipal, the footprint of Norfolk, where we might have vulnerabilities that could cost us dollars if we had arcane or tornadoes and such like that. And so people will be invited to participate and provide comments. Just wanted to make mention of that. You all remember the Call and Wait property on Lincoln Road, 15 Lincoln Road. It's been going through the permitting process the last few months to change that into a solar facility. The town actually had a judgment against the former owner for, to clean up that property. I guess it was a former used car junkyard sort of a location. So that's been through the permitting process. And as such, the new owners have purchased the property and paid off the back taxes, the penalties and interest. So that was, the town realized just over $87,000 that we had not received till now. So it's good news for the year-end cash flow. The Field of Flags is up on the, on Town Hill. If you haven't seen it, it looks wonderful. And as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, there will be a, a small taped ceremony for more day that NCTV hopes to hold later on Monday for those who like to watch it. And then lastly, we are in the process of reaching out to all the committees that you have appointments to, to inquire about whether or not the folks who are up for reappointment wish to be reappointed or if they know of anyone who might like to be reappointed because June typically starts the board's process to handle those appointments for the upcoming fiscal year. So it's, I wanted to bring it up so you're aware of it. And also if anyone's listening who has an interest in a town committee, now we'll get a list up on the website, the application, so that people can reach out to us if they'd like to be considered. So we can fill those openings. So those are the things I just wanted to alert you to and happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Life. I, I think the only thing I would want to do is reiterate where folks who are interested in joining the municipal vulnerability prepared this public listening session, where they could find that Zoom information to be able to join. I believe it's on the website. Do you happen to know where exactly on the website it is?
I don't, but I will, I will check and we'll make sure it gets on the homepage if it's not there already.
Okay, I see it. It's, you have to kind of dig for it. It's under the what's new section, but you have to scroll down to the posting from the 14. So maybe if we just repost it one more time, so it's front and center?
Absolutely. We'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you very much. That was my only question. Thank you for the update. C.C.
Just sort of generally regarding, I know you were talking about the MECC and addition of Mendon and Millville. And, and I know that this is, I, I don't mean to sort of overtake this as a budget question so much as just sort of a point of interest. Are, are we guaranteed the money when, when we take on these other towns?
So the process is the state awards transition grants to, to situations like this where we're, we're adding additional communities. So the state 911 director at our last meeting confirmed that we had our application in place and that the state would cover 100% of our costs, all of the four towns for the first two years and then a sliding scale for the second, the third and fourth year. So he didn't use the word guarantee, but he said it was, he was confident would happen.
Okay, that's, that was my question because I understood that there was grant, you know, that there was applications for the grant money and that there were more applications than there was money. And I just wasn't sure if this was that issue or if this was separate. So what I'm hearing from you is that it's, it's pretty much a guarantee.
I actually questioned him at the meeting. I said, all four of the towns, in fact, all six of his towns are, are somewhat dependent on this to balance budgets, especially in this situation. And, you know, with all due respect, 911 came to us asking us to take on. So if you're not going to be able to come through on that, you need to tell all of us on this call right now so we can make other plans. So while he wouldn't lie down on the tracks in front of it, I think it's pretty sure.
He's strolling on the track, on the tracks anyway. That was it. That was my only question.
Thanks, C.C. Chris?
No additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that will bring us to our next item this evening, which is to approve some warrants. Mr. Weeder, go right ahead with your first one, sir.
Yes, please approve the following warrant on 5/5/2020 in the amount of $109,537.98.
All right, second that motion. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Thank you. And I move to approve the following warrants dated 5/12/2020 in the amount of $69,090.88 dated 5/12/2020 in the amount of $234,053.1 and dated 8/20/2019 in the amount of $700. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Thank you very much. And our last item this evening is the approval of some minutes. C.C., take it away.
So I only have one in, in my thing. So, which is I moved that the board approves the minutes of the May 5th, 2020 regular meeting.
All right, second. Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
And it is voted. Thank you very much. Life, do you have anything else for us this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Chris, anything else for us this evening?
Nothing else.
C.C., anything else for the group?
No.
Hard no. All right. Well, with that, we appreciate everybody joining us this evening. I will once more reiterate the, the strong suggestion to leverage mail-in voting if you have the ability. It will only help your neighbors in the long run. And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, assuming there's no further discussion. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
C.C. Van Tine, aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.